Welcome to The Source. With your host, Dr. C.T. Curry. And co-host Kobe Owens. News all across the nation. The Source. Stay in the loop in the city of Wilmington, Delaware. Work together for change in the community. A call to action to find the resources. The Source. The latest in news.
Good evening. This is Dr. Curry.
This is Kobe Owens.
And welcome to The Source, Kobe. It has been another week that has been hot. But the great news is that we have no reporting of any shootings. Have you heard of any?
I have not, which I am grateful for.
Yes, we are, and I pray that we continue to do whatever we're doing. I have seen, again, an increase of public safety officers, police officers in our community. Some in the cars, some outside of the cars. So whatever the chief is doing, it's working. And even when, you know, one or two may slip in, we don't want to say that he is not working. But I think it's something that is going to take time to really get it to a place where we are really at a happy place with, as it relates to public safety.
Oh, absolutely, it's going to take time. But I think, you know, you're seeing the steps in the right direction right now. You're seeing the officers out of their cars, which is making them engage more with the regular community, the everyday community, so that they start building relationships. And that's how you start building that community trust back.
Yeah, now, there are some critics who were concerned about not having the Fourth of July celebration with fireworks and things of that nature. Do you think that was a part of their strategy as well?
So definitely, you know, the last few Fourth of Julys, there's been some violence that's going on. Happy to report there was no violence on Fourth of July this year. And on July 5th, there was a huge block party at Rodney Square, which hundreds and hundreds of residents came out and celebrated the Fourth of July. For those who do celebrate, we had concerts going on, poems and everything. It was just a fun time for the community. And I think while I do enjoy fireworks, and so many people do enjoy fireworks, they did do it up very nice. Now, I would have still liked to see fireworks at that event, too.
But you know what? Maybe he's trying to do his own signature.
Yeah.
To be his own person. And while the fireworks may have been something that we've traditionally really liked, I mean, the whole family gathering together in a block party or everybody is doing whatever. Were people able to cook out? Or did you have to come to whatever was going on there?
They had to come to the event. There was food and stuff there.
There was free food, or you had to pay for it?
Meant to both. But then also, I will say, you know, at the end of the day, we are a community. And I know at least on North Side, the guys came together for the kids and did their own fireworks show. There was a lot of them. And I'm pretty sure right now it's probably buy one, get 20 off at the fireworks store, because they're still popping them off. But it was, you know, the kids were able to see the fireworks still on Fourth of July. People had fun. Of course, the adults have fun lighting them off, and the kids have fun watching them.
Okay, good. Well, I'm just grateful. I'm glad that we were able to start reporting, not start, but we were reporting more positivity than negativity as it relates to the city government. And we haven't gotten to City Council yet, but we'll get there in a minute. Let me shift us a little bit to our governor.
Yes.
I've been a huge, and still is, a very huge supporter of Governor Matt Myers. And he's aware of my personality, that if you do good, I'm going to be with you. If you don't, I'm going to share what I believe is right. But in this case, he's been doing a really good job. And one of his main talking points, one of his main campaign items was the whole notion of education.
Yes.
He is a former teacher, so he understands the plight that many educators go through. And I'd noticed that on WDL this week, he had an interview, and he talked a little bit about, on the Rick Jensen Show, he talked a little bit about teachers being the front line.
Yes.
And why he really wanted to pump more money into them and the classroom than the system. Could you help us understand what that means?
Yeah, so when Governor Myers was running, he talked about changing the education formula. He worked with the task force and able to make recommendations on a hybrid model to change how our funding formula works. But outside of that, you also have to look at our budget bill, right? So our operating budget is $6.5 billion. HB 225 this year. And then we had a supplemental spending bill of $37 million. If you look at the education funding that got added to that, right? You have to, there's a few things that I wanted to pull out under that. So there's $33.1 million to cover projected growth in our schools, which also includes raising the teachers' pay. That is huge. That, you look at our surrounding areas and where our teacher salaries start versus a New Jersey, a Pennsylvania, Maryland, Virginia, New York, right? This makes us more competitive to try to retain teachers here, but also try to recruit teachers as well, too. $8.4 million of increasing mental health support within elementary, middle, and high school.
Excellent.
This is something that we have seen to be very beneficial already in the schools. Now, this is expanding across the various school districts throughout the state of Delaware. We have 19 different school districts. That's public school districts. Each charter is their individual school district as well, too. So I believe we have another like 30, maybe 40 charters throughout the state of Delaware. $3 million to fund teacher-driven projects, allowing teachers to request funds for classroom needs as they see fit. Again, this is for small projects in the classroom, supplies in the classroom as well, too. And that's across the board. $2 million to assist educational agencies with disciplinary needs. $250,000 to continue the voluntary middle and high school cellphone pouch pilot to reduce the classroom learning distractions. This is a program that they've implemented. And I'll be fully transparent. I'm not 100% in support of this. I get what they're trying to do here, but just putting your cellphone away, that is not going to make up the difference.
Putting yourself, say it again?
Your cellphone away.
Okay.
And a pouch locking it away where they don't have access to. I grew up in the school shooting generation. There has not been anything that's happened here in Delaware, but you never know. Additional cellphone, being able to make that call out could change a situation. So that's just me. I come from a different generation.
And because we both come from different, you come from the generation where the way they started teaching you how to get under a desk and things of that nature. I didn't come out of that generation. I came from a generation where everybody was loving and kind. Just a couple of people were a little mean. They may have done something bad. So I kind of understand it. But then, now that I have a child who's in the system, whose school participates in that, because she has to have her pouch. And I see all the shootings. There's a mixed emotions going on here, because I really think that they need to have the extra layer. But how do you handle the distraction? Because that's what I think they're trying to get at, dealing with the distraction. Because a lot of the children, like my child, who's a straight A student, quite naturally, she's not going to, if you say, "Don't use your cellphone", you're not going to use it. But there are times we watched classrooms where children have been on their cellphone the whole time the teacher's trying to teach, and it's just not working. So how do you really do that balance?
Yeah, I mean, it's hard. I think the schools can do a better job at restricting internet access. I know when I was in school, even on our computers, we couldn't even access YouTube. That is something that they can access now. But also, it's because they're using it for learning opportunities now, all these different videos on YouTube. I think it has to be more tailored. Again, when I was in school, and again, this was towards the tail, well, the start of them using more technology in school, we couldn't even get on ESPN, right? So, you know, there's different ways to block access to different internets, in apps while you're in the school building, X, Facebook, Instagram, Snapchat, TikTok. You can block access to those. And I think that would probably be a better measure. It's going to cost a little bit more. But again, I just come from that generation where...
Are those kind of conversations, are those kind of, I didn't cut you off, but are those conversations had with some of the teachers? Because when you're dealing with the Senate and the House? Because that probably, what you just said, kind of rang a bell to me, saying, "Okay, well, let's keep them with the phones where they can call out for emergencies, but let's cut some of this other stuff out." Why aren't we having those kind of conversations?
So I think, you know, the people who are on the task force, they are experts in this field, but they come from an older generation. So they see things a lot different than younger generations. And I'm in that middle generation, that millennial generation. Again, we had lockdown drills. We had, you know, fire drills and tornado drills and stuff like that. But throughout my, into my middle school and all of my high school years, the most drills we had was active shooter, right? And I still remember the code word for my high school, right? So again, it was drilled into us what to do there. We have seen it all across this nation, time and time again. So again, I think this younger generation is really, really ingrained in that. And again, I'm not taking away, because they do be on their phones, they do be playing around and everything. But also, in the back of my mind, it's just in case of that emergency. It has been mentioned, but I think people just don't understand the thinking of it. And I don't want something to happen here to have to prove things right.
And that's one of the reasons why I got very upset with the City Council members, where they wanted to block all you younger ones out, because their minds, like me, I will admit, you don't need your phone, because that's the era I was raised in. But I'm also recognizing, because I have a young child, that I want to be able to connect with her if something goes wrong, or I want her to be able to call out if something goes wrong. So you need all generations to be able to make this good policy. And when you have one generation making policy, it doesn't make sense, and it creates all other kind of problems. And I think that's what I'm trying to have this discussion right now on, is that while you're saying, you know, "I don't really agree with that policy", but you understand what they're trying to do. But what they're trying to do can also create another problem. So we need the conversation with the millennials. We need the conversation with the X, those X-generation or Y-generation, as well as those individuals who are here. So every task force probably should have a multi-voice.
Yeah, I would hope. And the last thing I really want to hone in on is $8 million to create a early literacy emergency fund to support the youngest learners. This is critical. The city of Wilmington just launched an early literacy initiative for the summertime that's going to be paired at the city's Hicks Anderson Center and the Pal of Wilmington, two of the largest centers in the city of Wilmington, to really address that educational gap that happens because of the lack of early literacy, especially in minority communities. Zero to three age range is the most important age range for developing of your brain. And if you're not hitting those certain metrics early on, it can pit you on a real uphill battle to succeed in school. So again, I'm glad that the governor pushed for this in his budget and was able to get that additional $8 million.
The only thing I'm hoping, while I agree with all of his push, I agree that teachers should need to receive more money so they can be more, we can be more compatible, and make sure that we keep some of our great teachers here. But this is the two things I want to make sure. One is qualifications and accountability. I think we need to make sure that our teachers are qualified to teach, not just getting in it for the money. Not that they're making a whole lot of money, but it's still good money compared to some other jobs. But the qualifications are very important. I'm not saying qualifications are the end-all and be-all, but you should be qualified to be able to teach our young people. And secondly, we got to have somebody, they got to be held accountable. For, you know, if we're going to pump the money in, then at the end of the year, what have we done? That is what sometimes is missing. We pump the money in, we pump the programs in, but we don't always do the accountability piece. And I think that's what I'm hoping for.
Yeah, I 100% agree with you on that. And that's why we have to keep talking about it as well, too, to make sure it stays top of mind.
Yeah, and speaking of the City Council, you know, I'm always wondering, how are we doing this week? Because last week, we were almost, well, two weeks ago, your hair caught on fire. Last week, it was cooling off. But how are we doing this week with the City Council?
Yeah, so first off, I just want to say thank you to everyone in the public who reached out, who made comments about the actions that they did not think were right. The members of council who were trying to push for that have backed down from that resolution right now. And they want to bring other stuff to deal with, quote unquote, "safety", to the forefront and do a resolution around that. The only issue there is the fact that we are drawing pushback from Newcastle County now. And I agree with what some of the members of Newcastle County said about restricting our First Amendment rights. Listen, at the end of the day, you signed up to be a public official, elected official. If you want to leave meetings early, if you don't want to hear from the public, leave, resign, step down. But you're there, you're paid to be a voting member of council, but also listening to the people of the city of Wilmington, whether you agree with them or not. I sit through meetings all the time where people don't agree with actions that I take in these last six, seven months. And guess what? I still treat them with respect, listen to their ideas, regardless of what they say to me, regardless of what attacks they use. I don't call them mobs. If they get very personal with me, I just say, you know, "Hey, let's talk about the policy." I just say that. I don't let them get to me. I get, people get emotional. But to try to restrict the freedom of speech is just a violation of our Constitution.
And I think that people want to follow the Constitution when it is befitting to them. Because I do, I am a strong believer in the protection of free speech. And I think that even though sometimes people come against me, and all you got to do is go to the beauty shop, and you hear a lot of craziness, because that's how people are. They just like to talk about people. But I never, ever go out of pocket and say, "You know what? We need to sue this person because they opened their mouth and said this, said the other." People have a right to say what they want to say. My mother always said to me, "It's not what they call you is what you answer to." So I think we got to start being a little bit more deep in our emotions, not so surface that we, let's do this, let's do that. Now, the question, one of them I know of had was the concern. One of them had was that their safety, okay? Afraid that they're going to be attacked and things of that nature. I think if you need to have some security there to ensure that doesn't happen, I'm with that.
Oh, absolutely.
But I am not with saying, "I don't want to be around hearing constituents." Because if you're not hearing me, then that means you're not voting in my favor of what I'm trying to get across. Even if you disagree with it, and the majority says this is what we want, really, it's your job to do what the majority wants, not what you want to do personally. Because what ended up happening is, for so long Wilmington, Tonyans, a lot of them have not really used the power of the vote, to vote for people, and vote for people out of office who needs to come out of office. But I'm hopeful that a couple of people did call me about the whole notion of starting running people against people. I've been getting those kind of calls, saying, "Okay, I'm interested in that, but I need somebody who can help me organize it, so that we can make it happen, and really remove some people out of office who just playing games with the public in all of these districts, not just one district, but in all of the districts, so that people will be held accountable." Because again, with competition, I believe that people tend to do what they're supposed to do.
I agree with you. And I think, you know, at the end of the day, we have a lot of work to do as a community to be able to really build that trust and power. And also, you have to get the information out there. A lot of things that happen on council are happening with very little eyes on it. We have all the news journaling people, news journal, different media outlets who come and write about it. But we also have to make sure that we're doing a good job of getting it alternative ways to the community as well, too.
And before it happened. And that's why I appreciate what you did with the last thing, because it would have happened, and then they would be sitting back saying, "It's done. I don't care." And all the not-truths would have come out, saying, "It is not this way, it's not that way." But just like with Donald Trump, big, beautiful bill, which we'll talk about a little bit later, they're going to really figure out the sting of that soon.
Yeah.
And it may be sooner than they think. One last thing before we go to, from our section of the program. I want to make sure that those of you who watch us every week, you really take heart to all warnings that come to your phone. Yesterday, alert came to my phone that, you know, there's a thunderstorm alert. And you've got to really take to that. Because what happened in Texas, it was really, I really felt really horrible.
Yeah.
The children, and we always say the children, human life is human life. But there's something about children, and these children were in this camp. And for that conservative state to be more, so conservative that they didn't take the precautions that needed to take in order that these children and people are safe, is just unbelievable. Many of those lives would have been saved. Matter of fact, probably all of them would have been saved had they passed the bill that they failed to pass because they felt they want to be conservative, they want to save money. We have to get to a place where we are taking public safety seriously.
Yeah.
Now, going back to that, I hope that if you're hearing of any warnings, we need to take alert, we need to take attention to that. Now, is there anything you want to add to that, you know, to make sure that?
Just praying for all the loss of life down in Texas. It was 118, I think.
So far.
So far. Here in Wilmington, we've been having flash floods this past week, heavy rains this past week, I'll say that, with some really, really flash flooding on Wednesday night. And in that, when it's extreme rain out, you know the roads and everything, don't try to ride through the water.
Yeah.
Please don't try to ride through the water. And I know all throughout the city of Wilmington and right outside the city, there was cars getting stuck everywhere. There was sits on Governor Prince alone, and they said one car was in the food line, parking lot, and drove right into the water because they thought they could get through it, get up the hill, where they could have took an alternative route. It would have taken a little longer, but you wouldn't have got stuck. Now, your car is gone.
This morning, when I came into the office, it was very interesting to see how, right there on Hill Street, South Hill Street, there's a puddle there, and it's really big. And I said, you know, I have a Jeep, it's one of the smaller Jeeps, and it's electric, so I don't know, I didn't want to burn out the electric or internet neither. But I thought about it. I said, "You know what? I am really concerned that we don't pay attention to the warning signs, we don't pay attention to when it says flooding." And a car in front of me went around me, because I pulled over to make a U-turn, pulled around, and went on through the water, but he only got halfway through.
Yep.
And the car stalled. And now, it was interesting, because I decided to wait and watch. He had to get out of his car in all that water, because the car couldn't go nowhere. Now, what if that water was a little bit higher and would have swept his car into that pond or that ocean, that thing that's on the side of Hill Street?
Then you would have really been in trouble.
And I think we really need to take serious to these signs.
Yeah.
We really do. So we're going to ask and pray that you will take true, if you get a warning sign, if it tells you to go to your basement, go to your basement, if it tells you to go to your roof, go to your roof. Let's take these very much serious, because this is very much needed in this time that we're living in. We're going to take a quick commercial break. And we come back, Kobe, we're going to deal with the Kobe Corner today. And we think we got some good juicy stuff, I hope.
Yes.
Hey, this is Pastor Curry, pastor of the He's Eye and Fair Baptist Church, Wilmington's most exciting church, the church that love ya and anything you can do about it. What we're going to do today is we're going to have a real good conversation. I'm excited. Every Sunday at 11:00 a.m. Why don't you call somebody real quick? Tell them Coffee with Curry is on. And let's get after it.
How you doing, community? I'm Alexander Hackett, and I'm here today to talk about Community Staffing Agency. I am the owner of an educational staffing firm. And what we do is, we staff all the schools in Delaware with substitute teachers, paraprofessionals, janitorial, and even substitute nurse. So if you have a school and you need our services, please contact me. But also, if you're in the community right now and you're looking for a job, please find me. And the way you can find me is by visiting communitystaffingagency.com, but also get into my direct line, 302-252-8982. Please contact me, please reach out. If you need assistance with your school, or if you're looking to get in the school, Community Staffing Agency.
Not today.
I'm here. You can tell me anything.
I see you.
We're in this together. Breakthroughs are happening.
Treatments are evolving.
The stats can change.
Society can change.
We can all say, "Not today."
Not today.
Not today.
Not today.
Not today.
Not today.
If we're together, bound to be better. When we're together, together.
This land is your land. This land is my land.
This land we love belongs to all of us. Yet, not everyone is treated equally. Right now, millions of Americans are fighting for the things promised to all by the Constitution. Freedom, justice, equality. The ACLU is leading the fight to protect our civil liberties. Together, we can protect and advance our rights nationwide, because "we, the people" means all of us.
This land was made for you and me.
Learn how the ACLU is defending the right to vote, free speech, and other civil liberties at myaclu.org.
It's good to see you. So great to be with everyone again.
Yeah, it is.
How've you been?
I'm not good. I haven't been good. The truth is, for a while now, I feel like I've been stuck in a dark place. I can't remember feeling, feeling happy. No one really hears me, you know? I'm good. Yeah, things are good.
Join us live for our weekly worship. Every Sunday at 9:00 a.m. On Facebook and YouTube.
Well, pastor, I'm doing the best I can, but I still got to have a little Chardonnay, and I still got to have a little, listen, I got to still sneak around. The devil is a liar. That's an excuse.
Wilmington's most exciting church.
Well, we're back. Kobe, what's going on with the Kobe Corner?
Yeah, so one, I want to start talking about this big, beautiful bill again. So it has officially passed, and Trump has signed it, which means stuff will start going into effect at its given start dates. This means we will see the largest cut in Medicaid, which means we will see the uninsured rate go up. We will see more people have more health issues. In 2023, Medicaid enrollment peaked at about 100 million individuals in America. It dropped in 2024 to about 84 million individuals. But again, I just want to break down the numbers of what people receive here, right? So for healthcare, CHIP and Medicaid, 23.5% of all Americans receive help there. Medicare, 20%, a fifth of Americans, 1 in 5, receive Medicare assistance. 11.7% receive SNAP. 8.8% receive free or reduced school lunches. 2% receive Women Infant and Children Benefits, WIC. Cash assistance, supplemental security income, 2.9% of Americans. TANF, 0.7% of Americans. Housing aid, whether it's rent subsidy, 3.6%, right? Social Security, 19.5%. Unemployment, 0.9%. That is the breakdown currently of what people receive. And they said, um, it was a representative from Tennessee, um, who said, he was asked why he was voting for this because his district would be greatly impacted for this. And he said, um, because he spoke to God.
Hmm. Um, He spoke to God.
It, it just, it sticks with me because I'm like, ah. I went to a, a more conservative leaning Catholic school for high school. Um, I've studied, you know, their teachings and everything. And even their most conservative teachings teach that you still love life and that you should care for your neighbor.
And the poor.
And the poor. And I just, I, I don't see how stripping healthcare by stripping food, by kicking people out their houses is how God spoke to him.
Now stop, stop there. You, you know why you don't see it? Because you're not looking at it right. I see how he talked to God. That's spelled with a little G, O-D.
Mm-hmm.
Gods are who people worship, okay? The God he worships, he spoke to.
Mm-hmm.
And that God said, go for the bill. Because Satan is a god too now. And I'm just saying this as a pastor. I wanna make sure you understand. When you start, you automatically think he's talking to the Elohim. You think he's talking about the God of the universe that we worship, who are Christians or who are a part of, of the belief of, of the Christian belief. But, um, in my opinion, not my opinion, if, if he said he talked to God, I'm not gonna say the man lying, he did. But what God did he talk to?
Right.
And if he talked to, you know, Lucifer, Lucifer told him to go, he didn't do it. He could have talked to Donald Trump because Donald Trump is a god to some people too. Now you may continue, you may continue on with your conversation.
Um, I, also there's tax breaks in here for corporate, uh, income taxes, but none for our personal individual income taxes. And if you look at our revenue for America, right? Um, 49% of the total revenue for America comes from individual income taxes, about $2.4 trillion. Um, our income tax makes up about 500, $529 billion. Payroll taxes make up 1.7 trillion dollars. Um, and then other taxes are included in there at 2.6, um, billion. So again, who is this really helping? You're stripping healthcare and stuff like that. All this is going to do in a few years is when we have to go back to these levels, it's going to increase everyone's taxes a lot, a lot. Um, but again, this is what we're dealing with in America right now under the Trump administration. And again, you had a Republican-led Senate and, and US House push this through and vote against the best interest of the people who are actually supposed to pick them into power. Um,
But I wanna see what they're gonna do. Let's see if these people are, are gonna let them do this or they're going to revoke.
I hope they do. Um, November 2026 is not far away, you know? It is not far away. Um, and there's some special elections, um, that are coming up already. But at the end of the day, um, after all those cuts to these programs and everything, you're still adding $3.3 trillion to the federal deficit, um, over the next 10 years. And that's without the additional coverage of healthcare and SNAP benefits and stuff like that. So truly, what were your intentions?
Well, his intentions were to make sure that his buddies get paid. And also he says that the tariffs, tariffs are going to, uh, make up the difference and you will see. He's big on that, you will see. He don't believe in no kind of research. I don't know what school he went to. For him to have gone to, they said, I think he just paid.
Yeah.
I think he just paid.
I mean, when, you know, your dad is a big time real estate developer and get a building name after you. Um, you can do things like that. Now, speaking of tariffs, Trump did announce earlier this week that he's putting a 50% tariff on Brazil citing a witch hunt against their, I believe, former president, um, Bazzolio. Um, again, this is us interfering with another government. Um, what they're trying to do, hold their former elected, who was corrupt, former president, who was corrupt accountable. And, and Trump is stepping in to try to help him. Um, and this is separate from the additional sector, um, tariffs that Trump had already put on Brazil. So again, um, he's using these tariffs, which is just taxes, it's just a fancy word for taxes, um, against other countries, which is only going to increase the amount of money it costs us to buy goods here in America, to be honest.
Yeah, you're checking out.
I hope, I hope. Um, next I wanna talk about a special election that's going on. So at the end of session, Representative Stell Parker Selby, who had a major stroke in December of 2024 after getting reelected, um, has officially resigned from the Delaware General Assembly. She rep it is in a Milton Lewis area, um, down in Sussex. There will be a special election on Tuesday, August the 5th. The Republicans have nominated Nikki Miller, a former principal at the Cape Pen Open, um, high school. She's, um, also the person who ran against Stell Parker Selby last go round in November and lost by 257 votes. On the Democratic side, they had nominated Alana Berry, who has extensive history of working in the governor's office. Um, she was the founder of the Bryan Stevenson School, um, down there in Sussex, um, as well as she is the new executive director of the Delaware Center for Justice. Um, this, over this next, well, less than a month now, um, they will be able to campaign, um, for votes down there. And then again, Tuesday, August the 5th is the big day, that's Election Day. Um, so we will see, um, how this election will go. I know I've worked with Alana, I've heard, um, how the community, um, adores her down there. So I hope that Democrats can hold on to the seat down there. Um, but this is also gonna be a test to see, um, this is, I believe, gonna be the first special election after the big beautiful bill, um, has been passed. So again, um, there were some hot topics that went on in the general assembly this year, especially overriding local control, um, when it comes to marijuana here in the state. It really was directed towards, uh, Sussex County. So I know some residents are upset about that. Um, so we will see how this all comes, um, out to play. Um, the polling locations, again, early voting starts very soon. Um, early voting, I believe, starts, um, 10 days prior to the, um, to the actual election, which would be the 24th of October. Um, and then there's various,
Of July.
Of July, sorry.
Yes.
Um, so it's July 24th to 26th, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. No early voting on the 27th, which is a Sunday. And then July 28th and 29th, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And then July 30th to August the 3rd, 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Um, polling places will be open to go vote. And those polling places, again, if you know anyone down there, those polling places are the Milton Elementary School, uh, Mariner, uh, Middle School, Brittingham School, Sussex Consortium, uh, Frederick, uh, Thomas Middle School, The Crossing, the Lewis Library, Lewis Elementary School, um, and the Milton Elementary School, um, is on track to be a polling place. They are having issues with their AC. It is scheduled to be done and ready before special, uh, before early voting starts. Um, but it is just anxious there, it may be a little hot. Um, but a letter will be sent if that polling place is changed. Um, so again, wanted to keep everyone updated about that. If you want to get involved with that race, there's multiple ways. I know the ACLU is doing some nonpartisan just awareness of, hey, there's a special election coming up. Um, next, I wanna talk about, um, initiative that is going on here in Delaware that was started by, uh, my state Senator Darius Brown, called the Delaware Grocery Initiative. So they have given out $250,000 in grants to battle food insecurity. Um, nearly two dozen nonprofits and businesses received a grant from the Delaware Grocery Initiative. Um, also known as the First State Food Systems Grant. This is for financial support, um, in the early stage of food chain. So again, from production to distribution, the program, um, looks to see how they could get fresh fruit and vegetables into food deserts. Um, or places that are at risk of becoming a food desert as well too. Because we have seen some grocery stores close up over the last, uh, few years here. Um, this, again, the 22 recipients come from all over the state. It ranges from grants from $5,000 to $12,500. Um, again, some of the recipients include the Delaware Nature Society, um, the Pharmacy Market, Flow Inc., um, Heritage Urban Farms, the Jefferson Street Center, Latin Community Center, Milford Advocacy for Homeless, Route 9 Community Development, uh, Ministry of Caring, uh, West End Neighborhood House and the YW, uh, of Delaware. So again, this is an initiative, um, to really start to address some issues that we have here in, in the state of Delaware. Um, and then lastly, I'm gonna talk about something that is major, um, that will have a major impact on Wilmington. And, but we have no control over it. It's actually a Pennsylvania issue. So in Harrisburg, um, SEPTA is planning for deep cuts to address their two point, or 200, $213 million budget shortfall. Um, and Delaware may be one of the cuts in there. So as you know, um, at the Wilmington Station and Newark Station and Claymont Station here in Delaware, we have the SEPTA rail. Now Newark already sees very low, uh, transport commuters there. Wilmington sees thousands of a year, a year, uh, from individuals who live in the PA, the, the southern, southeast PA region, um, who come down here to work and many who live in Wilmington and the surrounding areas who go up to PA to work or go up to 30th Street Station to connect to, um, New Jersey Transit to go work in, in Jersey as well too. Um, it has been a huge connector, um, for major cities that rely on connecting companies and workers based in Philly, Delaware and New Jersey. And a part of the proposal, um, would cut half its service by 2026. SEPTA would cut half of its services by 2026, January 2026. And that included the Wilmington Newark line, um, to address this budget defect. Um, the regional well, again, it connects us, right? Um, and this is huge. If we lose this, um, you know, i- if you don't have a car, um, you can be spending, what, $60, $70 if you use an Uber, um, to get around. Or if you wanna buy a, a train ticket, you know, through Amtrak, you're paying a minimum of $85 to $100, right? Um, just to go to Philadelphia. They will hopefully reduce, only reduce the midday services, which I would be fine with.
Right.
Um, and they're gonna pilot that to see if they save money. They're gonna start that in August, um, for the Wilmington Newark line, um, from hourly to every two hours. They say the peak is of course in the morning and in the evening, people coming home, people going out. Um, they also are looking to have a 21.5% hike on fares, um, as well as their bus routes as well too. Their buses really don't come down here. We have dark down here. But, um, that would also affect the, the Wilmington Newark line as well too. Um, I will be joining, um, my colleagues in Philly, um, to talk with, um, members of the General Assembly up in PA about why this is so important. Um, again, the Philly City Council, um, I have friends who are on the Philly City Council who reached out to me and said, you know, they really haven't heard from Wilmington, um, and from Delaware. I know, um, the governor's transportation secretary sent a letter. Um, but it's always good to have that communication, especially for something that's gonna have a huge impact on our city.
Yes.
Um, I'm currently in the stages of drafting a letter, um, to be signed on, um, by my council colleagues to send over as well too. But then also I look forward to having conversations, um, with different members of the, the PA delegation.
Okay.
So, um, that's all I really have today in regards to the, the Kobe Corner. I really wanted to bring home the fact that, you know, we may be losing a regional rail here, which is, is really gonna impact a lot of us. Um, and then also, if you think about it, um, I did a 2:00 a.m. ordinance earlier. Regional rail is something that people use late at night as well too.
Yeah.
Um, to, to go up to Philly as well too. So again, um, this is just gonna be disconnecting us from the rest of the world.
My mother, for years, with, with, she was driving still, but she would catch the, the SEPTA train to Wilmington to come to church. And it was right up the street. And, and there's a lot of people who really, who live in Philadelphia and, and they come up here to work and it's a great talent that we will be losing. If we were to lose, because to try to commute this every day, oh my gracious, I don't think it would be, it would be profitable one. I don't think it would be at all. For those who can drive or those who can't, it definitely would be devastating. So we hope and trust that they will just cut back the service. Uh, like you said, a couple hours during the peak time, keep that stuff flowing because I think it's going to work for us. Kobe, we're gonna take a quick commercial break and we'll be right back.
How you doing, community? I'm Alexander Hackett and I'm here today to talk about Community Staffing Agency. I am the owner of an educational staffing firm. And what we do is we staff all the schools in Delaware with substitute teachers, paraprofessionals, janitorial and even substitute nurse. So if you have a school and you need our services, please contact me. But also if you're in the community right now and you're looking for a job, please find me. And the way you can find me is by visiting communitystaffingagency.com. But also get into my direct line, 302-252-8982. Please contact me. Please reach out if you need assistance with your school or if you're looking to get in the school, Community Staffing Agency is the place to be.
This December marks 20 years of service from Reverend Dr. C.T. Curry as pastor of Ezeion Fair Baptist Church. And you know what? We're not gonna be quiet about it. Our electric celebration will feature five out of this world speakers.
You know why God takes you through some stuff and makes you keep having to go back through it? You know why God doesn't let some pain let up until the pain has done more than you think it has a right to do? Because God wants there to be no mistake when you come out of this, that the treasure that you have extracted makes you so unashamed of your relationship with Christ, that you have no fear or trepidation of telling people that the God I serve is real.
Don't fixate on what you spent. It wasn't a waste. It was an education. And education ain't never been cheap. Tuition is always high. And wait, watch this. It's not what you spent in the past that ought to concern you. It's what you might miss in the future if you don't make a change.
Why do you think the prisons out in these rural areas are put where they're put? Why do you think federal prisons up in Honesdale, PA got all that money? Because the negroes in those prisons are counted as citizens of Honesdale and they get all the money. The same thing they wanted to do 300 years ago, they are doing right now.
I am blessed to bless somebody else so they'll be fired up, inspired, so they can be edifying somebody else's life. Oh, child of God, you never know who's watching you.
Your mind or your intellect can never do what faith can do. Because if you use your intellect, God is limited to your ability to understand Him.
And that's not all. Get your shouting shoes on because we are also excited to announce performances from Twinkie Clark. Karen Clark Shear. And Kiara Shear. We are packing 20 years of celebrations into one week. Come together to uplift and recognize the love, sweat and dedication that went into turning our church into an exceptional campus, building the Wholeness Center and instituting affordable housing in South Bridge. Get ready for Dr. C.T. Curry's 20th Pastoral Anniversary this December, 1st through 7th. And join us for a week of Through the Roof celebrations.
And we're back. Kobe, real quick, on the politics side of the House, with all that is going on with the big beautiful bill, with all that's going on with Elon Musk coming after Trump, with, and the, and there's being a little explosion going on in the mega world, uh, do you really think any of this impact is going to impact, um, some of those places where not only will we take back the House, but the Senate? Because I'm still praying for that too.
Oh yeah, I mean, um, the bill already is putting pressure on people. Um, I think two of the biggest again is Susan Collins and, and Tom Tillis. Tom Tillis announced that, you know, he was gonna fight the bill, but he still knew it was gonna pass and he knew his chances of reelection would be horrible. So he just decided to retire. decided to retire. Susan Collins, um her, you know, she's seen her fundraising slow all the way down. And even though she voted against the bill, she's still gonna have to struggle with the ramifications of it. On the House side, though, they are running scared right now. Um and you either have one member who's in a competitive districts who voted for the bill, who uh put out a video pretty much begging Trump for help for fundraising, because he's getting so much backlash from his conservative people in the district who are gonna lose their healthcare. So again, hey, y'all decided to take um this action, y'all decided to push forward with it. Guess what? Now you gotta deal with it. So yes, you will see a lot of people lose their seats because of this vote right here.
Tell us his seat. I hope I said his name right. Did, is is that winnable? It's North Carolina, but is that?
Tillis.
Tillis, right.
Yeah.
Is it winnable?
The Senate seat, yeah, it is. So if you look at uh twenty twenty-four, right, they had no Senate seat up that year, but Donald Trump won North Carolina. He was the only Republican that won statewide. Every other uh local statewide race, non-federal race, went to a Democrat from governor, a new governor, new lieutenant governor. Their um Supreme Court justices are voted on down there. All those seats went to Democrats. There is a movement building in North Carolina, very similar to Georgia. Again, the federal level may be a little different. But when it comes to the Senate seat, he was already facing potential primaries from their former lieutenant governor, the Black Klansman, who he swears he was uh, well, no, he called himself a racist himself, um and a black Nazi as well. But um depending who they pit up, they will probably pit up someone far to his right to where he was, which then will push the moderates towards the Democrats. I believe that seat will flip in this upcoming election.
Yeah, because I I I just, I believe that we need to not only flip both both houses, but we need to get enough in there so that we can get some stuff approved, where if Trump doesn't sign something, they can just override him.
Yeah.
And and do, that's that's what I'm really hoping for too.
Yeah, you need at least one of the chambers to flip. Um if both of them flip, that's even better. But again, there's, there's a few seats that are targets right now. Again, North Carolina, Maine are probably the two biggest um that you can target. I would probably also keep an eye on Alaska if you have the right um person running up there. But also, you know, some of the other states that are in play could be Montana again. Montana has been going ruby red, but again, every now and then they switch up. Texas is also potentially in play. Iowa is also potentially in play. So again, you have to keep the pressure going. Ohio, I think there's only one person who can win in Ohio. And that's Sherrod Brown. He just lost his seat last go-round, but Elon Musk even came out and said that if it wasn't for him buying votes there, Sherrod Brown would have won by a nice margin. Which also makes me question a few other things. But I think if Sherrod Brown decides he's gonna run for Senate again, we have a really good chance of flipping that seat there. And that would give us the fifty-fifty majority, or fifty-fifty split. It would still be Republican control because of the vice president. But I could also see um potentially a Republican becoming an independent and caucusing with the Democrats, and that would be Lisa Markowski. Lisa Markowski, I'm not the biggest fan of hers. She has one of the most impressive records. She has always run very close races, and she is one of the only people ever, ever to win a write-in campaign, especially with a name like hers. Markowski is not an easy name to spell whatsoever. And and in Alaska, you had to spell it right. So again, let me just tell you how you spell it. M U R K O W S K I. And that's me looking at it. You couldn't take anything in. You had to remember that spelling off the top of your head.
And she won.
And she won somehow. So again, I do think um some of those races are in play.
Good. SB here in the state, SB seven uh passed.
Yes.
Tell me a little bit about that for those who are watching us.
Yeah, so SB seven had, is a constitutional amendment. It has been a big push of Senator Marie Pickney, who's the Corrections Chair, um and now Health Chair of the the Senate. One of the biggest provisions would require probation of parole officers to establish meeting times and location that are reasonable to accommodate um the verifiable work schedule of an individual who's on probation, right? No more just calling people in whenever, right? Which is something that we have seen time and time again. And also, it takes in to consideration education. So if you're in school and you have a class at a certain time, you can say, hey, I have class from this time to this time. Can we schedule in between childcare, healthcare, and transportation availability? Four main points in which we saw a lot of people get violated for, because, hey, I'm on the bus to you. The bus is going a little slow, or the bus had to stop to let someone on with a wheelchair. We're now ten minutes behind, but I got on the bus in time to get me there. They would still get in trouble or get sent back to prison.
It's 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 really a shame that we've gotta go to such drastic measures to get people protected. What about SB ten, one of the ones that are offering?
Well, with SB seven as well too, another thing, it allows for remote meetings. So Zoom and audio-only communication is also now allowed um in lieu of face-to-face meetings. That's in case anything happens. So one of the things that was happening during the pandemic was people was also getting in trouble because they were sick, um but still couldn't come into the building, but had to be at their meeting. It was a lot of things people weren't using in proper discretion. For SB ten, um that bill is named after Richard Mouse Smith. It was a bill that he had been working on for a very long time, almost eight years, um with Senator Towson um and a few others, uh Dr. Yazir Payne from U D, Wolfie, Darrell Chambers. This bill, it spans eligibility eligibility for individuals who are sixty years with at least fifteen years served who have or individuals who have served at least twenty-five years, or have serious medical um illness. It streamlines the application process to providing access to legal counsel as well too, to start the the process of early incapacient release. Senator Brian Towson was the Senate uh sponsor and the prime sponsor of this. Again, it just, it helps with court backlog as well too. Um it helps. This bill received a lot of public support, um especially from the two leading civil rights organizations, the N W A C P, of course, um where Mouse was the president of, in the Urban League, where Mouse and the N W A C P had a great relationship, um came together to work on this. And again, the funding was there. There was a three million dollar fiscal note required, uh reoccurring costs to help with the increased workload of the courts. That was taken care of as well too. And then now it goes to the governor's desk for his signature. I believe he's doing a ceremony uh later uh this month.
Got you. And last but certainly not least, Elon Musk, the president said he's off, he's haywired or whatever. Do you really think he's trying to destroy Trump at this point?
Oh, absolutely. And I think Trump's gonna hit back with him at going at some of his government contracts and everything like that to try to destabilize some of his money. But Elon Musk has also created his own political party called the American Party. And they are trying to get on the ballot in North Carolina currently right now. Um so we shall see how this all plays out.
Do you think that's gonna hurt the Republicans or the Democrats?
Oh, absolutely. It's gonna hurt the Republicans. It's almost like the Tea Party movement um or the Libertarian movement.
Okay. Well, we 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 had an opportunity to have a good show today. We we covered many, many topics. I hope and trust that as we go on through this season of tornadoes and and various things that are happening, I hope you'll please be mindful and cognizant of the warnings that come out, so that you will remain safe and be safe at all times. Kobe, is there anything else left on your corner for today?
That's all I have for today.
That's all you have for the day? Well, I'm gonna say to you, until the next time we get together, God bless.
Take care, y'all.
You've been watching The Source with host Dr. C T Curry and co-host Kobe Owens. Tune in every Sunday at five PM. Thanks for watching, and don't forget to subscribe for the latest episodes.